We'll turn this one.
Okay.
All right. Well, hello, everyone. Now, I'd like to call the special meeting of April 20th to order. Will the secretary please call the room?
Commissioner Hiddredale. Commissioner Rush.
Here.
Vice Chair Schaefer. Chair Christie.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Becerra.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
For the record, Commissioner Marash, you will not be in attendance today. Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you so much. Will we all please stand and so we can do the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Garcia?
Ready, begin.
And for the reasons to apply on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Does any member of the public have any public comments on non-agendized items? You may fill out a speaker's request with a form with the secretary and you have three minutes to speak until an extended time extension of time is granted by the chair. Do not see any. Okay, let's move on. Consent calendar. This is the time for commissioners to consider numbers on the consent calendar. Do we have a motion for consideration of excused absences?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion to excuse the absence of Commissioner Schaefer, moved by Commissioner Rush, seconded by Commissioner Becerra. All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's the end of the consent calendar. Business calendar. This time is to consider item number one, historic property preservation agreement fees reduction and private party nomination to the San Ana Register of Historical Property Fee waiver. Staff now will show this item?
Actually, no. Staff just stands ready to answer any questions you may have about this. This is merely an extension of what has been done twice before and it would extend it for another two years.
Okay. Time of what we directed you to at the last meeting, right? Before September, right? Gone. Okay, let me bring it back to the commission for any comments and questions, staff.
Commissioner Rush? Well, my only comment would be, thanks for doing this so speedily and do you anticipate any pushback on this?
Not that I know of.
I can't imagine why. I mean, I'm almost most disappointed I didn't think to say, I'd like to see it reduced yet again. But, um, let's move forward.
I have one question. So, um, I see these as extensions. Is there any way just to permanently reduce this? Just because, I mean, to keep going back? Is there a purpose for us to keep renewing it as opposed to just locking in a lower rate?
That would be from direction by the council.
Okay.
So, at this point, we're continuing what we have, but that would have to be by direction of the council for us to eliminate a fee.
But I'm asking staff, is there anything that would prevent us? I guess what I'm asking is, is there anything that we don't know? That, you know, oh, you can't make it permanent because of certain laws, certain something?
No, you could make a recommendation to do so and we would bring it forward as such.
Okay, I just, for my colleagues, I just think, you know, instead of having to bring this back every, what is this, every couple of years, every six months, two years? Just lock it in. I mean, we all seem to be supportive of it if our folks on the council are, why not just lock it in?
Well, I have a question. Okay. I think for the caution of locking it in for every two years in case the economy turns around and it's really good and we have excess funds, you know, and contributing this, that these fees could be lower. Okay? Because of the fact that, you know, we always keep thinking a fee's going up, but in two years, who knows what the economy is going to do? It might be even better than what it is for this two years. And locking it in at this rate when we could have lowered the fees by an additional $250 or $500 or what, that would give us the opportunity. That's my thinking of it.
I don't think there's a reason, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, ma'am chair. I just, I think for what we're discussing here, I don't think this locks it in permanently. I think if this commission or the council wants to adjust it in two years, they could. But I think just simply kind of removing the mechanism of going back every two years and doing it. I think if there was a fiscal crisis in a year from now, I think we would all react appropriately. But I mean, just for the sake of not going through the same exercise every two years in case, you know, because from what I understood when this was brought to us, this was something that someone in the community had said, hey, did you know this is about to happen? And I'm appreciative that they brought to our attention. So, instead of having that kind of fire drill every time, maybe if we just say for the time being, we're okay with this reduction and then going forward, you know, maybe annual review, but not necessarily it's going to expire.
Can I bring in another comment here, which may be important in your decision or recommendation? Right now, the city is going through a fee, what we call a fee development fee study. And we'll be looking at redoing all of our fees. And so they, initially, it was the intent of the city to have that done so that it could be part of the next year's budget. That is not, that's not the case now. And so, from, really from a staff perspective, we would ask that you, we are asking that you extend it at this time and then new fees would be established during that fee study. And at that time, if we have locked into place this philosophy of waiving it or of bringing it into half, then it would apply to the new fees. Eliminating the fees, this is an application fee and I'd be uncomfortable with taking that action at this time. Perhaps after the new fees were adopted, we may want to go ahead and do that. But at this point, we would probably be better off with a recommendation, a continued recommendation of waiving the total fee for an application and going into, for designation and then asking for a 50% reduction on the fee for the Mills Act contracts.
Any other comments? Commissioner Schaefer. Let's please acknowledge that Commissioner Schaefer is here, even though we excuse you.
Sorry about that. I'm in favor of the proposal as presented. I think that it is generous enough to incentivize homeowners to put their properties on, which is what we ultimately want, to preserve the fabric of our community. $2,500 is a lot to a lot of people, but it also is a big savings. And most of the people I think that are doing this, asking at least for the Mills Act, not necessarily to get on the historic registry, anybody can do that because it's free, so it's open to anybody. But the people that have been in their homes the longest, the Mills Act doesn't really help that much, to be honest. I mean, if you've been in your house like me for almost 20 years, I've got a better deal probably with my Prop 13. But for new homeowners and wanting to incentivize them, I think the 2,500 is reasonable because if you look at what your property taxes might be at today's prices, it's worth it to invest that your first year and then get the savings after that. So, I'm in support of it as presented.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just have a general question. What does the data say in terms of just the number of properties that could come on the registry as a result of this fee reduction?
Well, we had an average number prior to the fee reduction and, you know, there's been an expansion. We started doing this, and I believe, 2009, was that, Holly? Or 2014?
In 2013, when the fees were not reduced and they were still up around 9,000 to have it placed on the list and Mills Act, we only had three properties applied. In 2014, once the reduction was put into place, we had 49. So I think there was, that shows that there was a lot of pent-up demand and we responded to that.
How many do we have in the pipeline now, Holly?
I want to say about 15.
All right. Any more comments?
I would move that we approve the recommendation.
Second.
Second. Okay, moved by Commissioner Rush, seconded by Commissioner Becerra. All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Attention? Motion for unanimous. Okay? Now, moving on.
Can I just say thank you for all the background that you put about how many houses per year and all that? That was very helpful.
Okay. Next on the, okay, it's item number two. Is that correct? Okay. On there. And this is the item on the work-study session calendar, item number two, for discussion regarding view corridors as they pertain to historic structures. If there is any member of the public that wants, the staff has presented this presentation that would like to comment, please fill out a form and give it to our secretary here. Okay? All right. Now for the staff presentation, please.
What has come to our attention? We have, as part of our standard Mills Act contracts, we have a requirement. It's, a Mills Act contract is a contractual agreement between the city and the property owner. And in that agreement, the city agrees to apply for these tax reductions, calculate the taxes in a different way. And the obligation in terms of the property owner is to do a number of things, including maintaining their property, allowing it to be open to the public on certain occasions. And one of the things that we also ask is that a view court, what we call a view court or be maintained so that the property is in some, is visible from the street, from the public right-of-way. And so, one of the things that has come up recently is an application that would not come from, would not come before you because it's one of those items that has been delegated to staff for review. It's not, it's not, it's a fence that could alter the way that the property is seen and how it's viewed. And the applicant is requesting a, what we call a minor exception to the zoning code so that a fence could be higher than the level of the fence that is traditionally permitted by the zoning ordinance. This is a process that is reviewed by the zoning administrator. This goes to, and the zoning administrator is a professional. Oftentimes, we have a staff member, one of the senior staff members sit as the zoning administrator and they make decisions based on the evidence that's presented in the particular application. In this instance, because many of the staff have been, internally have been involved with this particular application, we are hiring and we're bringing in an outside zoning administrator who will be reviewing that application. But we as staff still have to make a recommendation on it and acknowledge the fact that the house that is requesting the minor exception variance is under contract to the city for a Mills Act. And so, on their part, again, the Mills Act contractor requires establishment of a view corridor. So, when we went to look at it as staff, we thought about, we didn't have anything in writing and as a planning manager, it's my responsibility to come up with some sort of code, so, excuse me, sort of policy decision. We put that into writing and then it's used consistently for all the applications that would come forward that might have a similar effect on a property. In this case, we, as staff, we talked about it and we crafted wording that reflected what we have been doing and how we have implemented, this, how we have looked at projects that were Mills Act contracts, projects, and how we have reviewed them when we were administering applications to the zoning ordinance. And the wording that we came up with is included in the memo that was presented to you and it is character-defining features. And as we know, when we have, when you designate a structure, part of the, part of the research and part of what we identify are character-defining features of a structure. So those things that are of particular importance that should be preserved, so that's what character-defining features are, should be visible from the street right-of-way, public, that are currently visible from the street right-of-way should remain, shall remain viewable. So, the idea, so that was, that is the proposal on the table by staff. We are asking that you review and consider it and, so that we can finalize our policy on this and use it on the application that we have now and future applications. That concludes staff presentation and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay.
I have a question regarding the general ordinance that we have for the city of San Ana. I know it limits front yard fencing to 36 inches. What year did we establish that? It's been around for a while now.
2005. I corrected that.
Okay. Okay, so you can answer that. Thank you. I know it's been around for a while, so that was my just point of clarification.
It has been, it has been around a while. It is one, the fence height is one of several components of the zoning ordinance for which people can apply for this minor exception. Not all portions of the zoning ordinance, not all of the development standards can you apply for that exception, you know? There's only a small number.
My point was going to be, the reason that came about is because so many people were doing front yard fencing that was in excess of that. And there's a term called the fortification of a community and it really leads to, you know, higher crime and lower property values and things like that. So it was a wise move that was put in at that time, citywide. You know, are there some properties that have higher fences that were, I guess grandfathered in? Yes. But that doesn't mean that we should continue going down that road and allowing more and more. I understand somebody's concern for wanting more privacy, but, you know, at what cost is that? And especially when you're talking about a publicly declared property.
I just wanted to make a quick clarification. So today, we're not really discussing a policy on minor exceptions or infences. What we're really trying to do is define view corridor.
Okay.
Does it mean a portion? Does it mean in total? Does it mean an inch of foot?
People.
Right. And so that's what we want to make that definition clear for our Mills Act contracts going forward. Yeah, that application is not before you today.
I understand. Yeah.
Are we, are we being allowed to discuss the issue of what a view corridor is?
Yes, that is the issue that is addressed.
Just wanted to be clear, okay.
Yes.
And that's all this background.
And that's what that was about.
About Austin and different communities.
Right. And if you would like to hear from the public on this, it might be.
Yes, sure. We'll bring it back to the, to the commission.
I have a couple of questions first. So, first off, talking about the application, not its specifics, just general procedure, it would go to the zoning administrator and then appear on the planning commission's agenda as a consent item, at the very least unless it's appealed, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, when you say minor versus major, just to understand what we're talking about because I think it kind of helps us in the context of the view corridor, what's a minor versus a major variance when we're talking about a fence?
Well, we don't have minor variances. We have my, these minor exceptions and they are specifically listed in the code and there's about five of them that you can only do.
Right, so minor exceptions themselves are typically like a 20% reduction in a specific value, whether it's a linear dimension, setback, a parking reduction. Is 20 typically that threshold?
20%.
Walls and fences specifically, though, are delegated to the zoning administrator? There is no maximum or minimum. It's just, it's a category of walls and fences that any exception from our code is looked at through the zoning administrator and the term is minor exception when it's used that way.
So if you wanted to go 37 inches, you would have to get a minor exception.
So I guess just, just to understand the simple version, what, so I want to build a fence that's taller than 36 inches. At what point am I no longer a minor exception? At what point am I major or whatever we want to call it? At what point do I trigger the next level?
One inch above the 36 inches, so I mean 37 inches or 36 and a half inches for that matter. You'd be required to apply for a minor exception.
So I come in, I say, you know what, I want an eight-foot wall. Whether it's legitimate or not, I want an eight-foot wall. Is that still a minor?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So just, I wanted to make sure I understood that. I think that's pretty much it for me at this point.
So, I have a question. Yes. Commissioner Hardy?
Thank you. When someone's applying for a minor exception for a front yard fence, is that given an okay at the counter or do they always go to planning commission? Or what is the process?
If, if it's a minor exception for a front yard fence, it always goes to the zoning administrator first. And then, as Commissioner Becerra, it comes to the planning commission on their agenda just to get consent for notification.
If they're denied, then, and their proceeding?
No, whether it's denied or not, under our current system, it will always go to the planning commission.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Clarification question. I think earlier you said, we do not have a full-time zoning administrator. We have people that's from the staff that just take up that position as needed and in this, well, we're not discussing a specific case, but you're bringing someone from the outside in that can be needed.
Right. Zoning administrator.
It's not a funded, full-time job?
No, it operates as a judge.
Like a hearing officer.
It's like a hearing officer, but in a judge kind of role.
I get it.
Actually, ma'am chair, I have one last question. So, this, this commission comes in and says, you know what, as long as, whatever the average height of a person, as long as it's up to their nose, let's just say somehow we do some math and we determine it's five feet. So everybody says, you know what, as long as you can kind of poke your nose over a fence, that's the view corridor. Does that change anything for any application for some sort of minor exception variance, whatever we're going to call it, for a fence over 36 inches? In other words, whatever this commission determines, an applicant would still come to the planning counter and apply for a minor exception or a variance of some sorts? That would still go to the zoning administrator, correct?
Yes, that's correct. The only difference is that for our Mills Act contracts is that any property then who just blocks that view corridor by whatever you determine it to be, would then be in violation of their Mills Act.
Okay. And so I'm assuming there's a particular application that has spurred this discussion? I guess I was just a little confused because I know there's some sort of public review process already. They have to make certain findings to justify the exceptions. So, I just found it interesting that it's coming through here before it gets to where it's supposed to get to.
Well, it's the Mills Act.
That's fine.
It's protected.
Could I ask a question?
And the reason it's coming here first is because, is because we wanted to clarify with you that policy decision, make that policy decision correctly and because we're granting an entitlement. You know, the minor, if we grant it, if it was approved at, by the zoning administrator, that's granting an entitlement.
Right.
And then, and so we didn't want to do that before the policy was clarified, so.
And not only that, but then if there are others that would be blocking the view corridor, we would be able to tell them that they're in violation.
Okay. Yeah. Commissioner Rush?
You've given us some background information, which is interesting to read. I'm curious, and so, well, two questions. One is, obviously, the state gives us as a local historical commission, the latitude to determine what a view corridor is for our, for our community to fit within parameters that we would set for people to have a Mills Act contract. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So my next question is, as opposed, I mean, certainly as a part of our deliberative process, it would seem appropriate to know, what are communities like Pasadena and Glendale and...
Orange.
Huh?
Orange is 42.
Orange, you know, other communities that we would look to that would have large amounts of historic resources, what is their, what are their municipal standards for a view corridor for Mills Act contract?
I can answer that because there is research done on that. In the city of Orange, it is 42 inches throughout the whole city, even the Mills Act, 42.
You don't mark fence height?
Yeah. The view height on that for the, in their.
So they don't make any distinction between historic or Mills versus just any structure? It's all the same? So if we took that attitude, then we'd be at 36.
Right. If, if you say that it's a consistent fence height throughout, it would be at 36, but I think what we feel is more important is that the structure be able to be visible and part of the, the community.
Because this body doesn't have the ability to determine fence height or wanted fence height. We want to know from you what the difference is from the distance between you on the right-of-way to that structure. Do you mean it to be in, well, the way we've always interpreted it, it's if it's totally blocked, that's not permitted because that's not the intent of the Mills Act. What we didn't want it to get into the business of, at least in my opinion and in the past, is determining, is it 10% blocked? Is it one foot blocked? Is it, you know, to get to that minutia. But we wanted to get here from you, what your determination is.
Well, I might understand then that up to now, if somebody came to the city and wanted to put up a fence that was taller than 36 inches, whether it was a hedge, a stucco, concrete block fence, any kind of a fence structure, be it vegetable, vegetable matter or, you know, wood, metal, whatever, that if it exceeded 36 inches, the answer is no.
It goes to the zoning administrator.
It goes to the zoning, yes. It's no unless they apply for and receive a minor exception. That's any fence.
And if it was a historic structure and they went to the zoning administrator, have there been exceptions made on his properties that had a Mills Act contract?
Well, this is Mills Act contract, so we don't have any record.
Well, I'll take that back. Are there, were there exceptions allowed or given? Well, I'll take that back. Are there, were there exceptions allowed or given on properties that were deemed historic?
Yes, not that we have given them, but that were placed on the list and given a Mills Act contract, even though they did have a fence that was taller than 36.
So there are some historic fences that are taller than 36 inches.
Because they existed prior to 2005?
Yes.
Okay, but since 2005, I'm just trying to get a context of what decision had been made. So since 2005, the zoning administrator, the planning counter basically told somebody, you're going to get a no, there's no point writing a check to ask for variance, because it's 36 inches, period.
Correct, we haven't had any of those since then.
We haven't had any, yeah. And we have, I believe we've approved a few historic structures that have had fences that were historic, part of the historic site that were...
In excess of that.
In excess of our requirement.
One other thing to add is that for residential fence height, 36 inches is the maximum for non-artorial streets. There are instances, for example, along Broadway or Flower, where those secondary arterial streets, for example, are allowed to go up to 42 inches in height. So 36 isn't the maximum citywide. It's 36 for non-artorial, 42 for arterial streets.
If you're on Bristol, you'd have a little bigger fence.
Exactly.
Neighborhood or something.
Most of the time here, we're talking, in this context, neighborhood is going to be 36 inches. I just want to add that to that.
Commissioner, I have one last question real quick, and that was...
Commissioner Becerra.
So you, so the project that's spurring this conversation, it was scheduled for the zoning administrator, and then it was continued. So I assume at that point, because it was already scheduled for a hearing, staff made a recommendation, it was public. What was that recommendation?
It was not public. It was never circulated. It was scheduled, the meeting was continued, and we did not...
What? The meeting was canceled.
The meeting was canceled, so.
Okay, so no recommendations?
No, no, the meeting was canceled.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Harvey?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So when we're talking about a view corridor, maybe it's obvious, but are we just talking about the facade of a structure? Or, I mean, in this case, we're talking about homes, residential. So are we just talking about the facade, or are we talking about more than the facade? Like a right or left, or north or south elevation, or?
We're talking, we're really concerned, we're talking about the facade, yes, but we are talking about facades that are visible from the street. So, you know, if it was your backyard facade, that's not, that's not something that we would be looking at. And what we're particularly concerned about are those character-defining elements of the facade.
So it also, excuse me, it also could be like an accessory structure that needs to be seen also, if it has historical significance. Is that correct? Like a garage or carriage barn or something?
If it had been identified as a character-defining element of the site.
Great, thank you.
Any more questions for Sam? If not, they're... Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I just want to clarify, what we're, the recommendation is that character-defining features visible from the street right-of-way, at the time the structure or structures are placed on the historic register shall remain viewable. That's really the intent. And what would, that would mean is if someone had a structure, they placed it on the historic register, and then they went through the process, and they don't have Mills Act yet, they're just on the register. They conceivably could go through and get something that would, would block the view of these character-defining structures, and that, there's no recourse that the city would have in that case. They're not going to take them off the strict register, but presumably then if they went in and wanted to get a Mills Act, then they'd have to lower the height of it, of whatever they put in, right?
And what we're really concerned with is, where they've already got the Mills Act, then they can't block what was there when they got the historic designation. Well, in that regard, I would want to point out that we have multiple properties that have various types of elements that are in front of the structure. The walking sycamores are a good example of that. Sometimes there are fountains or other landscape or water features that are in the front that may block if someone was walking by. So I think what we're really trying to get to the core of it is are we considering the view corridor to be any single portion of that property, the character, or just the character-defining features, or in total? So that, do we really mean, as I mentioned before, when we talk about in totality, that's the way that we've done it in the past, is if somebody came, wanted to build a fence, no problem, you could build your fence, because if I'm, as I'm walking around, I can see the house from various different portions of it. However, if somebody came and wanted to build an eight-foot wall in the front, that no matter where you walked, you couldn't see that resource, then that would be something that we wouldn't want to encourage at all. So I think it's, really, that's the part that we're talking about, because it doesn't necessarily mean a fence.
It can be landscaping or whatever.
Right, right.
Hedge or anything that's on here.
I guess the point I was trying to get at is, features visible from the street right-of-way, that determination of whether a feature is visible or not is made at the time that the structure or structures are placed on the historic register. Is that correct?
If they're applying for the historical register or the Mills Act, they must meet this criteria, right, to have it viewed?
No, they just cannot have a code violation on site. So if they already had a fence that was already taller, like, there are many of them, on Santa Clara, for example, there is one where the fence is approximately five to six feet and pretty much surrounds the whole property, but the house is very large, it stands above the fencing material, and that we put it on the register and gave it a Mills Act in spite the fact that it had a taller than 36-inch fence, because we felt it was still significant enough to warrant that. So if, depending upon what we define as a view corridor, either that would be, either it would have to be a character-defining feature, or even that person would be in violation of their Mills Act contract.
Well, I'm going to guess maybe you're talking about Dr. Stroshine's house there at Santa Clara in Victoria. The fence clearly was built at the exact moment the house was, in the same architectural style. It wasn't just some, you know, grape stake fence covered ivy.
And we do have that in place as well for all areas of the city, that we require them to be architecturally compatible. I mean, that's a given.
So if I had a house on the registry, and I wanted to get around this fencing issue, and I planted 10 trees in front of my house for privacy, cypress trees or whatever, that would be covered under what you're proposing. That would not be allowed either, right? Because it'd be blocking the view. So I want to make sure we're not leaving a loophole here.
Our code defines that as well.
Am I clear? Okay. From the public, Evangeline Garansky, home.
You sure you want to hear me, huh?
Yeah.
Sitting here listening, everybody. I'm Evangeline Garansky, for those of you who don't know who I am. I am a police volunteer, and I work code enforcement. Here I am. I do this all the time. I go through this all the time. First of all, I have to correct something for the gentleman down there. The allowance across the property is at three feet in a residential area, and it's four feet on a arterial. So 42 inches is four feet. Okay, so that's 48 inches, just to make a correction there for you. I go over, I have 25 infractions that I look for on the different properties all over town, and believe me, I have been north, south, east, and west, and central in this town in the last three years. I have covered 32 neighborhoods. I have over a 65, 67% compliance of all the warnings that I do give out. Right here, it says to you on that view corridor, you see, to me, listening to you, it sounds like you're just kind of digging this and digging this and tearing it apart. A view is something you see. A corridor is an entrance to what you see. It's as simple as that. It says right here in black and white that the owner shall not be permitted to block any view to that property with any new structures, such as walls, fences, or shrubberies, or to prevent the view. It's in black and white. It's as simple as it can be. One thing I want to ask you too, and to remember this, if you decide to change something for one person, are you going to do it for the whole city? If you don't, you're going to open up a big can of worms. One of the things too are the cypress trees that I have to go down, and I have to tell people all over the town, not just in the area, all over the town. I'm sorry, those have to come down to three feet. You're not allowed to, you may go three feet on the side of your property, as though three feet back to 20 feet, three feet high back to 20 feet. Then you can go up again, and that's, that's pretty, that's a pretty long, pretty long entrance there. In the south part of town, I will say, sort of south central, just a couple of months ago, I went through there at the request of a neighbor to see if the cypress trees can be 20 feet high. They block the view for people from backing out, especially if they come down the side of the property. On the 25 infractions, it says on there, nothing can be more than three feet, no matter what it is, okay? Would you believe those people down there, out of about seven in one neighborhood, when I went back in two weeks, they were all cut down to three feet? So people do comply with what the city asks of us. I can say, if you, if you make this for one person, you've got to do it for the whole city, or you, they will come back with arguments throughout the whole town, and you're not, that's not going to be a pretty thing. Those are just some things I want you to think about, okay? Is that, to me, I think you're just beating this to death, this view corridor. It's as simple as can be. If the view is something you see, a corridor is something that leads to what you want to see. Okay, so if, what is good for one is good for all in the city. Okay.
Thank you so much. Is there any other person from the audience that would like to speak? If you would, would you fill out afterward?
I just didn't put the right number on it. I'm sorry.
Okay. Hold it. We got it.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't use it, I'm sorry.
That's okay, it's still...
No.
I usually don't.
Wait next to you. Okay, this is item two. Bobby Kina?
Yes.
Okay.
I have some confusion about this. Is, if someone is in violation of the Mills Act, what happens to them?
Um...
If they have a contract?
A Mills Act contract is for 10 years, and it's automatically reviewed, renewed every year. So if they are in violation of a Mills Act contract, they are notified that, and put on notice that they are in violation of that contract, and asked to correct the, correct the violation. If they don't correct the violation, a city can initiate rescinding the contract, but they can't rescind it for 10 years, because it's a 10-year contract. So they, they post a notice of cancellation of the contract, and then at the end of 10 years, it's, it's over, so.
So in this case, nothing would happen to that person for 10 years?
No, in addition to that, there is a financial penalty, that is 14 and a half percent of the fair market value of that property.
Okay.
And it's huge, and it's huge.
How often is that penalty applied?
Just that one time when it's canceled.
And then, I'm a little confused about historic designation and Mills Act. So houses can be on either one or both. Do these, is that correct?
No.
No.
The houses can be on, they have to be designated, and then they can apply for the Mills Act. So they have to be designated, and then they apply for the Mills Act.
Thank you. Does this height then apply to everyone with a historic property, or just people with the Mills Act?
The height applies to every residential property in the city.
In the city, okay. So I just want to say that, I don't think that, I don't think it's reasonable to, for the city to grant a variance for what I think are really reasonable height parameters for one person. Because if you're going to do it for one, then you have to do it for everybody.
We're not here about the variance today.
Okay, I'm just saying that.
Thank you.
That, that, you know, I just don't think that, that's something that we should consider, and I don't know how you fix that, but I don't think it should be done. Okay.
Thank you, you said that, okay. Ma'am?
I'm, everybody's spoken for me, and you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
We just want to make sure we give everybody an opportunity, okay? Now I'll bring this back to the council, and so what are you asking us to do?
To agree to our definition, or not agree and have your own definition.
Okay. Commissioners, Rush?
Just addressing a comment made by Evangeline. Evangeline, and for those of you who don't know, she is a former English teacher. You'd never know that for modern day, so. But you're parsing words over view corridor, and the National Trust prefers to use the word view shed, and so I don't, I don't have a problem with view corridor, but maybe you might, maybe the term view shed would be, would be easier for you to, to stand. But I, let's see, where's my note here? That's all I have for a moment. I may have another question in a moment.
Okay. Ms. Harvey? Yes?
Yes.
Go ahead. Do you have a comment?
Yes, as I understand it, we're not really discussing whether the, there should be a height limit of 36 inches, or whether if that is the height limit, there should be variances granted. We're looking at this one specific issue of how do we make more precise this statement in the Mills Act that the view corridor, or the view shed, or just the view, shall be maintained. It now says that the owner shall not be permitted to block the view, the view shed, the view corridor. And I think the question is, what does that mean, the owner shall not be permitted to block? Does that mean that the owner cannot do anything which diminishes the view by 1% or by an inch, or by a half? Or is the owner in violation when, only when, let's say, the view is blocked entirely? And the, as I understand it, the way this has been interpreted administratively, and what we're being asked to, to, I guess, endorse, or bring forward as a policy, is that blocking the view means that character-defining features, which were visible when the property was placed on the register, no longer are visible, and that's considered to be blocking the view. If the view is diminished in some other way, but not blocking the view of the character-defining features as far as this particular statement in the Mills Act agreement is concerned, they're not in violation.
Yes, yes. Who wants to answer that?
Well, I think you've hit it spot on.
That's exciting.
Thank you.
And I have a comment.
Come in.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Harvey?
So we're talking about character-defining features, and all properties that have a Mills Act contract, their individual character-defining features are spelled out in that Mills Act contract. So it will be, it's very easy to see whether or not those are being hidden, or if they are in view.
I'd like to say, okay, let's say that...
I'd like to say, okay, let's say that this is my home. I got the Mills Act, okay, on the phone, okay? And as I'm walking here, I'm a visual person, okay, guys? I'm walking here on the side, and you see a very, from even the porch, steps, or anything that you see, as I'm walking along here, you can see the whole structure, okay, because of the fact, as you're walking, it affords me that opportunity to see this magnificent structure, and why it was selected to be on the histor, you know, the register, and get these tax breaks. But if I'm up here like this, I'm blocking that view, right? I'm blocking that view. You can't see it whatsoever as far as looking at the distinctive characteristic of why that home was selected on, um, on that particular, with the Mills Act and the register, right? Am I getting that right? As far as what you're calling a view corridor, so that it could be seeing all of it, the entirety, the entire home, from north, south, well, north, I mean, going left, right, center, whatever, no matter where I'm working, walking to, or even from the street as I'm driving by, looking at this home, or even, um, looking at maybe other homes that are also listed that, you know, as I'm walking, I can see, oh, this, this, you know, coming around that corner, look at this whole neighborhood, right? If I got that right, I just want to make sure.
Yours is different from what Commissioner Hiddedale just said. You want the view that was, um, a stat, that was available at the time it was adopted to not be altered in any way. Is that, that's what I'm hearing from you, right? At the time the designation was in place.
Well, I wanted for, for even, you know, when we're considering for it, for the view to, to be there. You see what I mean? Okay? That, whether-
Do you mean that they couldn't even have a 36-inch fence?
No, they could, could have a 36-inch.
Okay.
But, you know, keeping that, because that's the standard. But with that 36-inch fence, as we've seen from other properties that we put on, you still can see that entire property, okay? Remember at our last commission meeting, I pointed out, look at that fence, you know, that's going around there? That's what, what I'm hoping that this is saying, is that it's being viewed no matter where I am. Cross the street, look at that, look at that, look at that, as I'm walking by, or even as, you know, I'm driving by, okay? Because we have a lot of people that, you know, this home tour that's coming up, uh, from other parts of our city, that love to drive by and look at those clean lines, look at those structures, where they can see all down there, and just see the beautiful architecture that we do have in Santa Ana. So is, I hope I'm on the right track. Is that what you're saying here?
Um, no, we were phrasing it the way Commissioner Hiddedale said, which you would be allowed, you would not be allowed to block the view, um, but, um, you would be allowed to diminish, diminish it in some manner. So you would be allowed to plant trees in your front yard, you would be allowed to, um, to build a fence, not, I mean, we're not going to approve, um, a, you know, at this time. So that's, that's what we're saying. So you could, you could do something that could diminish it, but you would not be able to block it. That is a standard that we have been using consistently.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Hirdel?
Yeah, yeah, Madam Chairman, yeah, I think you're, you are getting into some refinements that may have to be made someday, but perhaps not today. I think what you're suggesting is about this, suppose there are five character-defining features, okay? And suppose that, walking in front of the house, I can see all five of those from any place in, in my walk. And now suppose they do something so that I can still see all five of those, but three of them I can only see 50% of the time. I mean, I think that's a, that's sort of what you're suggesting, where I can put up a tree that blocks some of the view. And then I think you're also getting into another thought, well, suppose my neighbor has a historic house, and they have a Mills Act agreement, and suppose I put up something which blocks the view, some of their character-defining features.
That I'm not on the Mills Act, and that would have to go somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah, then I, I, I don't think we want to get in many-
No, 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 I'm just trying to understand between block view, you know, and corridor view, okay?
Yeah, but I, I think you, you were at least concerned about the, the issue of, well, suppose they diminish the view of some of these character-defining features, so they're still visible from the public right-of-way, but not from as much of the public right-of-way as they were before. As I understand it, the, uh, policy we're asking to, we're being asked to look at today doesn't really address that, and I'm, I'm hoping perhaps we don't need to, to get into that today.
Okay. Commissioner Rush, and then Schaefer.
Um, to me, it seems like, and, and I'm new to this body, but to me, it seems like simply adding this statement, "Character-defining features visible from the street right-of-way shall remain viewable," um, to what is on page 2-1 of the memorandum you gave us, where it says, "A view corridor enabling the general public to see historic property from the public right-of-way shall be maintained." A, and, and owner shall not be permitted to block the view corridor, or view shed, maybe we want to change that term, to the property with any new structure such as walls, fences, or shrubbery, so as to prevent the viewing of the historic landmark by the public. To me, it would make more sense to add that verbiage. I, I don't, um, to me, it seems, since we have the Mills Act, which is renewable, is given it for a 10-year term, but is essentially renewed every year. So theoretically, a member of the public could come before this body and say, "I would like to see a request that the contract on XYZ property be revoked, because here's photographs of what has happened over the last five years." They've put, you know, nine fountains in the front yard, and they've planted all these trees, and, you know, again, how do you legislate good taste? It's tough to do, but, but by the same token, we can't write that into a, into a, one paragraph for 50. But I think we can put in, um, as we say here, what we want the character-defining features to be viewable. I don't know that it necessarily has to be that they're viewable from all points on the compass on a property, uh, at any given time. Maybe you can see three of them, uh, from one street, and five of them from another, okay? I think that's reasonable and okay. Um, and I don't want to stop people from being able to put up, whether it's decorative or functional, some kind of a fence, but I do think that our, our height limits are reasonable. And, um, as far as I know, someone can come before this body and if they provide sufficient evidence, that someone has so altered the, the facade to, by putting in shrubbery, I, I would like to see, uh, shrubbery slash, or slash landscaping put in. Because someone, someone could come in here and say, "Well, that, I planted landscaping, I didn't plant shrubbery," you know? And according to the Sunset Western Garden Book, why those plants are not described as a shrub, they're landscaping. You know, you get people splitting hairs with you. So, um, um, anyway, that, that would be my suggestion, that, that essentially that sentence which you have put in italics on page 2-2, simply be added to the verbiage. Um, I think it, it would provide more clarity, which is what, I think is what you want, so that your staff has some better idea of what the commission wants to allow and not allow. I mean, it seems to me ridiculous that if somebody wants to put a fountain in their front yard, in, in front of a historic structure, that's going to add to the structure, it's not going to take away, provided the fountain is not something obscene or whatever. Garish, you know? Um, and you get people that figure if a little bit's good, a lot more is better, and fine, then we can, we can petition to have that property removed, because it's, uh, no longer deemed to have a historic, uh, a view, et cetera, so. That's my comments.
Commissioner Schaefer?
I'm in favor of this change, but I just want to make sure that we're not, uh, creating something that we're going to enforce so strictly that somebody can't plant a tree in front of their house, or something like that. Well, because, like Evangeline pointed out, the code is the code, and it says that, so is there, you know, can, can I plant a crepe myrtle tree in front of my house, you know, that's not going to be a gigantic tree? Or, I, I think about places I've been, like the White House, and there's trees in the lawn in front of the White House, and it blocks the view partially, but you can still see it from a public right-of-way.
Doesn't block it, it may diminish it. That was, that was lovely wording.
So as long as we're, our intent is to be reasonable with people to not become the landscaping police and say, "Oh, you planted a rose bush, and, and you got to take that out."
That's a silly, that's a bad idea.
Yeah, no, well, I'm just, I want to make sure that we're not-
Right.
-going too far.
If I might, if I might, just to clarify, thank you Evangeline for the clarification.
I'm glad you pointed that out.
It is 42 inches for non-arterial. But one thing to note, 48 for non-arterial. But one thing to note is that shrubs, fencing, shrubs, trees, landscaping is permitted throughout the front yard, provided that it doesn't create a barrier or fortress type of effect. So if you have, you know, a row of Italian cypress that are, that are planted on the PL, then that could then become a front yard fence, but, you know, sing, sing, single-handedly, a single crepe myrtle, or a single type of shrub or tree-
Or three birch trees or something.
Would be perfectly acceptable in a residential, uh, front yards.
Anyone else? Okay, and where do we go from here?
Do you want, do you need a motion?
Motion?
Well, actually-
I think we have direction.
I don't think we can do anything.
I think we have directions. It's a work study.
It's a work study.
We needed your, we needed your direction, and-
Yes, if you could just state for the record what the consensus is to include this language, and we can put that in as a minute order.
Well, that's, that's an action, and this is a work-study session.
No, we're, yeah, we're, we're fine. But I think we do, we would like to reiterate so that you're, we're clear on, um, on the general consensus of the-
I do agree with the comment about the word corridor versus some other word shed, or, or something that's-
You mean to change it to view shed?
Yeah, I think corridor, it does seem like, you know, you're going down a, a drive to a, a landmark house or something, versus, you know, meaning what I can see, what's visible from the sidewalk. So, there's probably a better term.
So we want to change view corridor to view shed, add, add landscaping to shrubbery, and, and simply add your italicized statement to what's already there.
All right. And, okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right.
All right. I have, um, the, okay? All right. Now, um, I guess our next item is, again, commission comments?
Staff comments.
Oh, staff comments, I'm sorry. Staff comments, I'm sorry.
Um, thank you. At the last meeting, it came up that the first Thursday of the month is a difficult ti, can be a difficult time. Um, and we looked into changing it. I believe you've got a, um, a request from Sarah on, on time, think about it, get back to us. There is a little bit more, we couldn't bring it to you tonight because it's going to be a little more involved. I think the fir, um, what is going to happen is, we are going to have to, A, amend your bylaws. So we'll have to bring forth, because your bylaws state that you have to meet on the first Thursday. So they state the date that you meet. So we'll have to go through and amend the bylaws. Um, we're also going to be take for, taking forward a municipal code amendment, because right now the municipal code amendment requires you to meet once a month. So, um, we're going to be, it's a little bit more. But I did, I believe I heard at the last meeting that, um, July, the first Thursday in July, because it was the 4th of July week, was a difficult time for people to meet, and we were wondering if we could do it the second, um, Thursday in July, if that was going to be possible. So, um, if you guys can think of it, think about that, we will follow up with you on that July meeting. Um, and then we'll be putting together the bylaws amendments and the, um, and the municipal code amendment, um, to make everything, to just correct the whole package at one time. So, uh, that was why we didn't, and, um, that concludes staff comments.
Very cool. Okay, break it to the commissioner. Any comments?
Well, just to follow up on that, Madam Chair, I, I thought we looked at the bylaws about a year ago.
We did, we did.
That's what I was going to say.
We didn't revise it correctly.
Well, we, it was, we did, the bylaws is correct, are, are correct. There are four meetings a week. We, there is a section of the code, yeah.
A year, a year, right.
Yeah, four meetings a year, but, yeah, but it's actually the-
And special, special meetings.
The, the municipal code is what was never changed. Once we, once you transferred from 12 meetings a month to four, many years ago, is my understanding.
All right, well, I, I have to thank, uh, thank the staff for their, you know, for the attention to this kind of detail. And with all the projects you have in the pipeline too, this is quite somewhat of a stimulus. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Commissioner Rush?
Um, I don't think I have anything more. I, I, I guess I thought we were going to discuss the issue of, uh, changing the meetings in total, but I guess that, we went off track on that. But, no, I have nothing else.
Commissioner Schaefer?
No comments?
No comments. Commissioner Hurdie?
Um, yes, I just want to say that, um, I'm happy that we extended the reduction, uh, fee for Mills Act applications, and that it was very interesting to discuss the, um, the view corridor, and how to define that, and sort of pin that down a little bit better. Thank you.
Commissioner Sarah? Commissioner, that's it?
No comment.
No comment.
Thank you, staff. I know you put a lot of work into this, really, on this, and, um, and getting us to understand exactly, like I said, I'm visual, and sometimes, sometimes I have to use objects to make sure I understand exactly. And thank you all, commissioners, for your input on this, uh, on the clarity, so that you can go forward with, you know, as far as applying this to that. Who knew old homes and old properties could be so entangled, you know, and, and everything else? So, anyway, um, we are going to return to whatever days available in July that the commissioners will be able to attend. Uh, if it's after the 4th of July, a couple of things, I'm going to, you know, don't forget Memorial Day is coming up, don't forget, you have the-
Flora Park.
Flora Park next, next weekend, and then happy 4th of July, okay? Meeting adjourned. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner, I have some, uh, rules and infractions that I owe by, okay, Ryan, and, and like residents, and I'm sure there are restrictions that we have, just to make things a little clearer.
To make it.
No doubt.
Probably been around two thirds of the time in the last 15 years or so. I don't think I made it last year.
Oh, let me have it, no, because I think I gave it back to Mr. Hurdie. There you go, sir. You have an idea what I look for.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and for clarifying all the, the comments, because I, yeah, it was very helpful.
Oh, good, all right.
Appreciate you.
Sure. Sure.
Did you, did you want to discuss this today?
Did you, did you want to discuss this today? I mean, did you want to say anything about the...
Yes.
Today?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll have plenty of time to discuss it. We'll bring the body out.
I wanted to clarify that for me.
You only just said we're changing the bylaws to keep consistent?
Oh, yeah, it's not, I don't know if it's on the desk or not, but it's... Yeah, I will.
Bernie, I can be there in about twelve minutes if that works.
I'm going to have it open on Saturday if you happen to have time.
Did you, did you get her email about somebody's meeting and she wanted to come to that?
I'm sending Manny. Manny Escamia. Yeah, he's coming. He's like one of our assistants in recent, he said he could make it. He lives in town. All right, take care.
All right, thanks. Well, it was around around that time we established, you know, the fortress, the fortress ordinance is looking forward, you know?
Meaning the...
Yeah, it'll be fun. Oh, God. Yeah, so. Yeah, I'm looking forward to that. It'll be good. All right, well, I'm out of here. Sue. Good night. Have a good night, John, thank you. Well, we appreciate your efforts. Yeah, you know, it's, it's like the initial, like you're saying, it's, these details are really kind of compound issues sometimes what we're doing is happening also. Oh, like a view shed, you know, like an ecological, ecological view shed. They use it quite a bit. Yeah, yeah. So this is a return. Pleasure to meet you. I've seen your, it's Bernie, it's Vern with a W at the end. Yeah, it would be comprehensive planning, so not a lot of current development. But I, I wasn't going to revise it for a while, so I've seen all that stuff. Great to see you. All right. Commissioner Hitterdale? He nailed it tonight. That was spot on. We appreciate, we appreciate that. You know, Lisa and I looked at each other and I said, he read through that pretty clearly.
Absolutely. Well, he's a professor.
He said, he's going to be a, you know, professor or maybe an attorney or something, I used to practice.
I'm not an attorney.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Oh, totally is. He just did it. I mean, he was so dead on. Go, Larry. He was like, yes, that's what he meant, you know? He was like so dead on and it was like, what?